We're going to get started. We're running a little bit late, and I know that we have some of my colleagues who are under the weather. Councilmember Florine cannot join us. Councilmember Elrich is also not joining us, and Councilmember Urban. So I think it's this particular group here. And first of all, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank the senator for coming over. We usually do this in the summer, but I'm so excited that you're doing it now because we have so many issues to discuss. We welcome you, and we obviously thank you for your service. Congratulations. We're so excited that you're still our senator.
Thank you.
Really, really wonderful. And obviously, all of my colleagues, you know, have a lot of questions and concerns that I know are exactly your concerns as we're dealing with some very difficult challenges. And of course, we're just beginning to get into our process for budget, having the school system announcing their budget tomorrow, and so on and so forth. So we're really eager to have some kind of a sense of where we're going to be. And what I can tell you, as I mentioned earlier, is that, you know, this group here around the stable, it's a group of committed public servants, and we have already done a lot of real hard work, a lot of structural changes. And we obviously were hoping that we didn't have to continue in that line, but we'll do whatever we can, and we look forward to working with you very closely as we develop other priorities and look into other issues. So welcome, and we're going to give you the floor, and then we'll have some questions, I'm sure, from my colleagues.
Well, thank you. First of all, congratulations on your election as chair of the council, and we wish you only the best, and we know we're in good hands. So congratulations.
Thank you so much, Senator.
And to Roger, congratulations on your successful term as chair. And I thank you with, it's been wonderful working with the council and working with the county exec. In Montgomery County, you've heard me say this many times, but this county is really blessed with just such a quality of life, opportunity, but with a lot of challenges. This is a county that embraced diversity a long time ago, and it's paid off big dividends for the people of the county and for our state. But it's a challenging county. It's larger than many states, and certainly has a lot more challenges than many states. And the leadership here has recognized it, has tackled these issues directly, and I'm just very proud of representing the senate, and I look forward to a very close relationship in moving forward with the issues. Let me just put this in context of what's happening nationally. We have the fiscal cliff, which is dominating our discussion. The congress is in session. We'll stay in session until we complete our work on the fiscal cliff, or January the 3rd. January 3rd, under the constitution, the next congress will come into being, noon on January 3rd. So we have until then, we actually have until December 31st to deal with a lot of the deadlines that we call the fiscal cliff. The fiscal cliff, there is a lot of expiring provisions in our laws, a lot of tax provisions that were written during the Bush years would expire, so the tax rates would go back to the pre-Bush tax rates. Not just on the income tax rates themselves, we also have dividend rates, capital gains rates, the alternative minimum tax, estate tax. We also have, for the last two years, have had a payroll tax holiday that expires, which means everyone's payroll, actual check would go down by a couple points. We also have the sequestration orders that were put in during the extension of the debt ceiling. These would be automatic across-the-board cuts. It would be on the domestic discretionary side around low over 8%. On the defense side, about 10%. So these are huge cuts that would go into the operating budget. We also would have a major change in the Medicare system, in that the payment rates for physicians in Medicare would be reduced by about 27%, which, for all intents and purposes, means that many doctors would not treat our seniors or our disabled population. And then we hit a wall on December 31st on unemployment compensation. It's not that new people wouldn't get the extra benefits, it's people that are currently receiving benefits would be cut off of benefits. That all happens on December 31st, January 1st. The net impact on our economy, according to Economist, is about 3%, which would take us from a positive growth of about 2.5% to a negative growth of about 1/2%. That means we would be into a recession with large numbers of unemployment. Now, if that weren't bad enough, the following month, we hit another crisis, which would be the debt ceiling, even though this would contract the government dramatically and would have an extremely positive impact on the debt. It means we would be spending less money and bringing in more money. It would still require an extension of our debt ceiling. The failure to do that would cause a huge crisis for us as far as interest costs and the credibility of America, and since we came close to that in the last congress, we no longer can say, oh, we'll fix it. People wouldn't believe it, particularly if we hit the cliff without solving the cliff. It would present a real nervousness. The 3%, I told you, does not include that. So the contraction of our economy would even be much greater because of all this. Now, just to make matters a little bit worse, then we'll get to some more positive news. Montgomery County would be hit harder than most. The reason is that you not only would be hit harder on the tax side, the income tax rates, we know that when you look at the distribution of income, Montgomery County pays a higher amount, Maryland pays a higher than national. You put all that together, we'd get hit harder. And Montgomery County would be hit the hardest in our region. But that's not the end of it. On the sequestration orders, the federal workforce would be hit hard. You have a large number of federal workers. The federal agencies would be hit hard. You have a lot of private employment related to our federal agencies. All of that would be at a pretty hard level for the county, and I could keep on going on. I mean, the programs that are important, the transit programs, those types of programs would hit Montgomery County unusually hard. So we can't let this happen, and I don't believe it's going to happen. I believe we will have some way of resolving the fiscal cliff. We shouldn't be in this position, but we are. So what can we do on December 10th to avoid the fiscal cliff? What is reasonable to expect? And I know, speaking for our delegation, and I think you'll find unanimity among the Montgomery County federal delegation. Senator McCulkey and I talk about this frequently, and we are on the same page as to what we need to do. Congressman Van Hollen and I talk about this regularly, as recently as last Friday when we were together, and we agree as to what needs to be done. And Donna Edwards, who currently represents Montgomery County, but John Delaney has a January the 3rd, I think you'll find no difference at all in our position. And that is, we all believe we need to make a down payment on the debt. And we've already done a trillion dollars in spending cuts, and I think this is important to understand. Since the recommendations of Bull Simpson, which is what most people look at, we've already done a trillion dollars over 10 years of discretionary domestic spending cuts. We're operating basically with a freeze on our discretionary domestic spending. Now, I've been in government a long time, and I don't think we've ever had a freeze on federal government spending. We've been operating under a freeze, just as our federal workforce. Their pay has been frozen. So we're under a freeze today. That saved us about a trillion dollars over 10 years. So that's been done. The next piece, and President Obama's absolutely right on this, the next piece is revenue. We need revenue. You can't balance the budget without more revenue. So what President Obama is asking, and which we hope will happen as early as this week, is for the House of Representatives to pass a bill that the senate has already passed. And the senate doesn't have an easy time passing bills, but we passed the bill. We had over 60 senators vote to extend the Bush tax rates for taxable income below $250,000. Now, there's some confusion. Some people say, well, that's 98% of the taxpayers. Some people say it's 90% of the small business owners. It's 100% of the taxpayers. Everyone gets the advantage on their first $250,000 of taxable income. So it's all taxpayers are benefited by that. Secondly, it gives predictability. People know what their taxes are going to be. They can start making decisions. Right now, they are, because of uncertainty, they're not doing things. So it gives us certainty on the tax code, gives tax relief to 100% of our taxpayers in this country, and yet it provides us, if we do it right, up to $800 billion of revenue over the next 10 years. So it gives us that revenue piece. It's not enough. We need more revenue than that. I'm going to tell you that. We need more revenue, but it gives us the next down payment. Then what we would hopefully do is agree on some reductions, particularly on the mandatory side, because the discretionary side has already been hit. And on the mandatory side, a lot of us have said, look, you put the right policy in healthcare to reduce hospital re-admission rates and invest in how you deal with dual-eligibles, the most expensive part of our healthcare system, in a better managed way, you bring down the cost of healthcare, which saves us Medicare and Medicaid dollars. And then lastly, on the military side, many of us believe that we can not only reduce our military baseline budget because of the reductions of our combat expectations, particularly in Afghanistan, it's called the overseas contingency accounts, OCA funds, that we can reduce, but we also believe we could consolidate a lot of our international facilities in a more efficient way that can bring down military costs. If we could work out some down payments in those three baskets, the revenues, and on the healthcare side, on mandatory spending, and on the military side, lock in some savings, eliminate sequestration, extend the debt ceiling, and come up with a framework allowing our committees to come up with the policies to produce the revenues and the additional savings that we need. You know, a lot of us believe tax reform is absolutely essential, but you're not going to enact tax reform in the next two weeks. There's too many potential consequences of changes in our tax code. Let our committees work and come back next year in an orderly way to deal with those issues. That's what I hope will happen in the next two weeks. Will it happen? I don't know. The negotiations are taking place between two people, President Obama and Speaker Boehner, and they're not on the same page. So it's uncertain whether we'll be able to get this resolved or not, but I can tell you, speaking for Senator McCulkey and Congressman Van Hollen and Edwards, we are absolutely committed to working in this matter. But I agree with President Obama. A bad deal is worse than no deal. I don't want us to go off of this cliff. It would be devastating to our economy. We saw the consequences of partial bad deals that have been done in the past. We can't let that happen again. So the president was successful in this election in large measure because of his commitment to a balanced way to deal with our fiscal problems, and we must have a balanced way to deal with our fiscal problems. So we're going to stay tough on this. So now, let me switch gears and talk a little bit about Montgomery County and specific programs, and then be glad to keep this informal and answer questions you might have. We're obviously watching the transportation issues very closely. We are operating under a different transportation policy than we've had in the past. We extended the service transportation of two years, not six years, as many of us hoped. And that two years changed New Starts. New Starts were how we got projects like the Purple Line committed to funding. We would compete, get designated in a congressional act, and then we would fight for appropriations that meet the federal commitment so that major New Start transit projects could be funded. We felt very comfortable that the Purple Line would fall into that category of a New Start. We thought Carter-Cities would also be eligible for significant funding. Congress eliminated earmarks, including earmarks in transportation bills. So there's no federally protected share for a New Start program. However, there is funds available for New Start on a national competitive basis. The Purple Line has already started to receive funds under these programs, so it's reasonable to expect that the Purple Line will be funded. It's 1.9 million a year for New Starts, and the Purple Line itself is more than that. So as you know, it's going to be difficult to see how the funding actually comes out with these tight times. To make matters a little bit more challenging, New Starts also include improvements to existing systems, so there's going to be, we expect a lot of national competition for the money that are in New Starts. We're committed to getting the project funded, and we will work as aggressively as we can, including the Carter-Cities. We do have other transit projects in Maryland, including the Red Line over in Baltimore, and a real desire from southern Maryland to be connected to the Washington area. They have a real serious problem that requires transit. We fought hard and won most of the battles for transit funding on the transportation reauthorization. We have a strong coalition of legislators who will continue to fight for transit funding. There's no reason to believe that as we move forward, we won't be able to fund transit projects. I might tell you, we are looking for different funding sources, looking long-term. The gasoline tax is not going to be adequate to fund national transportation policy programs, so we are looking for different ways to fund this, connecting it to our energy policy. We think it's the most likely way, looking for revenue flows that are beneficial not only to transportation infrastructure, but to energy independence. So we are trying to combine those two things, and we'll obviously work very closely with you. BRAC realignment is finished. We hit our deadlines. Everything's been done, thanks to the hard work of our delegation. I particularly note Congressman Van Hollen. We are moving forward with transportation improvements along Wisconsin Avenue as a result of Naval Bethesda, and so that's moving forward, and we're pretty pleased about that. A lot of other projects we could talk about, and I'd be glad to try to respond to questions that you might have, but obviously, the dominant issues are the global fiscal issues and how they will affect the county, the political change in Washington. President Obama's victory, we think, is clear that he, that the Republicans are going to have to answer questions if they don't start moving some legislation. They can't just say no to everything. We know the political leadership makeup is not much different, although the Democrats did gain a couple seats in the senate, and gained more than that in the house. So it was a clear victory on the policy side. We now got to see whether we can translate that into congressional action. Thanks for lunch.
Anytime.
And I heard you say, I mean, I walked in, I thought it was spring outside. It's so warm here.
It sure is. Well, thank you so much, and you know that we probably have quite a bit of questions, so I'm just going to make a round, starting with Vice President Rice.
Well, thank you very much, Senator. And hi, I want to first start off with thanking you for your commitment to making sure that Montgomery County, which I feel, and you kind of noted this, is one of the great economic engines of this state, and its importance in terms of protecting its vitality is something that all of us around this table share. To that end, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about economic development and some of the opportunities that are there, and then transition into education. I've actually got two questions, and some of our members aren't here. I'll take one of theirs, too. But specifically economic development, there are a lot of federal installations that are considering moves at this point. You know, we had a battle when it came to HHS, and so for us, you know, we're now looking at the FBI and, you know, hopeful that something like that, there are a lot of areas that we've been able to identify that might work well, and so we would certainly appreciate your support. I'm not sure if there's been any commitment at this point from your office or from the rest of the delegation, but we'd love to hear from you about that.
Sure. The FBI, because let me talk about the FBI. First of all, HHS, we've always said in Maryland, if a facility is located in a community, it's likely it's going to stay in that community, and we're going to fight to keep it in that community. So I know that there was a significant interest in Prince George's County on HHS. It was, I think the agency made the right decisions, and Senator McCulkey and I made that very clear during the process, that that's not where we're really looking for opportunities. We also said during the discussion, and I've said since I've been United States senator, when you look at facility locations, particularly rental facility locations, in the Washington region, one county has been underrepresented, and that's Prince George's County. And we'll show you the numbers, particularly where the workforce is located, where transit-related development is possible, that there has not been an adequate utilization by the federal government of Prince George's County. We think in large measure that has been motivated by reasons other than cost, which has us mainly concerned, because we should get the best dollar for the taxpayers in the most convenient location. So I will continue to make that point. I'm going to be bullish on federal facilities located in Maryland, but I also want to promote where I think have been unfairly underutilized locations within Prince George's County. We will work very closely to get the very best locations in our state for agencies. Now, in regards to the FBI, there is no predetermination on the FBI. There is a significant interest in Northern Virginia, and we are very much aware of that. Within the last month, there is now interest in the district for the FBI. The agency last week sent out an interest inquiry and really opened it up to any area in this region, including Montgomery County. The challenge is that this is transit-related development. There are certain musts. You must have a large tract of land. It's got to be transit-related. It's got to be close to the Beltway, and it's got to be owned by the federal government. There is no cost land. That's a challenge. Okay? It means, first of all, if it's in private ownership now, you have to acquire it basically free for the government and then lose the tax base of the land. So it's not something that's going to be easy to find, but we, again, you need to decide whether this is something you want to compete for or not. Clearly, Prince George's County is going to compete for it. There's no question. They have a couple tracts of land that will meet that standard, mainly because they're underdeveloped, and they have land that's very close to the Beltway, that's on transit's locations, that they can get control. There's at least one or two tracts in Virginia that could meet that standard, and we are open for competition. So the answer is, if this is something that Montgomery County really is interested in, let us know, and we will certainly be bullish for Maryland.
Excellent.
As far as federal facilities generally are concerned, I think we got to lift the cap that we have, that GSA has imposed. GSA supports us in lifting the cap that discourages the leaseback arrangements. We've gotten GSA's commitment to eliminate that. It's now an OMB. We think we can get it waived on specific projects, but we want to get it completely eliminated. That's working to the detriment of Montgomery County and Prince George's County, I might say, and we hope that we'll be able to get that. It's the only region in the country that has those caps on lease space, which makes no sense at all. We're going to continue to fight that. As far as federal facilities that are located here, we've been extremely successful in getting expansions. These are tough economic times. There are several facilities that need to expand, the FDA being one, and we're very bullish on trying to get those appropriations done and to be able to expand workforce here. And we will fight for the county on either maintaining or expanding or new locations that the county wishes to compete for.
I appreciate that. And Senator, just the last one. With education, I was actually just at an education policy conference this weekend, and had a chance to talk to Joanne Weiss, Chief of Staff, to Secretary Tony Duncan, and one of the conversations that we had is about closing the equity gap and making sure that with the new Common Core state standards that are going to be coming out, it's going to be imperative for the federal government to support education more so than they ever had before, if we're ever to rise from 14 and get ourselves back at number one in global competitiveness. And so I just ask you to briefly comment and would, of course, ask for your support in that initiative.
You're right on target. I mean, that, to a large extent, that's the fight we're having on the fiscal cliff. There's a group in Washington that really says, let's solve the fiscal cliff by reducing the federal government's involvement. Eliminate Department of Education. Let's eliminate NIH. Let's eliminate Department of Transportation. We had a hard time passing a transit bill because there were those in the house that thought, what's the federal government doing in transit? We're having a hard time passing a farm bill because there are those in Washington that say, what's the federal government doing with an agricultural policy?
I don't think you could get the duck stamp.
We couldn't get the duck stamp. You're right. They were fighting the duck stamp. I mean, it's amazing. The things that they're fighting, that they're, I mean, I, it is beyond my comprehension, the views that are being expressed on some of these issues. So any reasonable person who looks at how you solve the fiscal problems of America will tell you, you have to have more revenue. We're now at about 15% of our economy in federal revenues. Historically, we have been over 20%. When Ronald Reagan was president, we were over 20%. When Bill Clinton balanced the budget, we were at 20%. One could argue that the demographics and challenges of America would indicate we need more now than we need then, but we at least need as much, and we can't do it at 15%. Why do the Republicans that are espousing these positions want to maintain the 15%? They want to use this as a club to eliminate the federal government's involvement in education, the federal government's involvement in healthcare. They want to change Medicare, make it a totally private program. All these things are to reduce the federal government's role. You're absolutely right. If we're going to grow jobs, which is the best way to grow our economy, if we're going to be, we have to be competitive, education has to be a national priority. You've got to invest in education. You've got to invest in research. You've got to invest in job training. You've got to invest in roads, bridges, energy grids. That's how you create jobs. That's how America stays competitive, and the only way you can do that is with a balanced approach on dealing with the federal budget deficit. And that's why I said, we don't want to go off of this cliff. We'll do everything we can to prevent going off of this cliff. We will compromise, but we can't cut a bad deal because then we're going to be, we won't be competitive, and we won't be able to type of economic growth this country needs.
Thank you. Senator, before I move to my colleague, following up on that, in terms of the revenue question, what about immigration reform? I mean, once this is done, I'm sure that hopefully this will be the next focus, and obviously, this will mean more revenue, and it will mean also more education opportunities for a large group of people that would eventually be the ones paying into our social security fund, et cetera. So where is that right now in terms of radar?
Well, I think I'm more optimistic about immigration reform than I've been any time in the last four years since the last election. So for a couple reasons. One, it's needed. It's desperately needed. Immigration reform, the formula for it is kind of well-known. We protect our borders. Everyone agrees on protecting our borders. Make sure we know who's coming into this country, have a lawful way to come into America. To deal with our immigration numbers in a more enlightened way for not only economic reasons, humanitarian and family issues, so you have the numbers that reflect the reasonable demands and needs of our country. And then deal with those who are undocumented in America, allowing them to come out of the shadows and be able to be protected in this country, not to get in front of the line, actually go to the back of the line as far as any chance for citizenship, but a chance for citizenship, but the ability to legally work in our system. That's what immigration reform is all about. I think most people in this country now recognize we've got to get it done, and quite frankly, the results of the elections help us because it showed where, like in Maryland, where we could pass the Dream Act, and you saw the activism on these issues of fairness around the country, that I think our political system now understands this is no longer a negative issue, but a positive issue. We've always known it was the right policy, but I think now we have taken away some of the advantages the opponents had, and I am now more optimistic than I've been in a long time that we can get immigration reform done.
Councilmember Andrews.
Thank you. Well, Senator, thank you for joining us today and taking the time away. You've been here in the county a lot over the years, and also very well represented by Ken Reichardt at many, many events. So good luck with your work, and hope the other leaders can see it your way as well. I wanted to ask you a question about transportation, because as you've driven around the county over recent years, no doubt you've seen the congestion that we have on so many of our roads.
I have.
And yet, there is one highway that is very underused, the inter-county connector, which has had high tolls now for about a year. It's been fully open for a year, and the tolls are $8 round trip for cars and over $60 round trip for trucks during rush hour. So, yeah, it's having an impact certainly on use.
Yeah.
Three years ago, the county council took a position to urge the state to lower the tolls that they were setting them at, and I recently proposed that the state consider, as Maryland Transportation Authority, try a lower toll to see if that would dramatically increase the use, so that we can get some traffic off our other roads and use this highway that is now here. So I was wondering if you would be supportive of the Maryland Transportation Authority taking a, you know, hard look at this, to see if there's a way to better use this capacity that we have now, so that it helps our capacity that we have now so that it helps our, our constituents.
Good question. I, I want to preface my answer by saying I've, I've never gotten a speeding ticket on interstate, on the ICC, but there's certainly a lot of police cars.
There are.
They're using it. I don't know.
They like it for some reason.
I was, I was surprised, the, the constant reminder.
It's vigorous enforcement.
Right. I hear ya. I'm not sure the priority there, but, um, which also discourages, I think, some use, but maybe not. Everybody wants to be law-abiding, so. You're absolutely right. The capacity is, could certainly be a lot greater. It is a very important artery as far as the congestion in this region is concerned. It is across county. The tolls, to me, seem to be high. I think it's a state issue. I'm not sure the federal government has much. Use a very creative way to finance the ICC. But to answer your question, I would welcome an analysis of the tolls versus use and the burden and cost benefits, et cetera, because that's, to me, should be the, the guiding force. I think one of the things you're gonna be finding more and more as we go forward, if we can find a broad-based way to finance transportation in the future, I hope we can. I hope it's related to energy, so it makes us also energy-independent, less use of carbon-based fuels. I hope we do all of that because we need to. It's essential for our country, not only on our national security, but also our commitment to the environment, and it's also better for our economy. But if we're not able to go as far as we need to, then you're gonna see more of these select tolls coming into effect. The technology is now well-perfected. Where all you have to do is put a, a monitor on your, on your fender, and you could be charged wherever you go in this state. And I'm afraid we'll see more and more of that, and I think the ICC will be used as an example, and it may be very difficult for us to use roads without paying for them. Again, I would prefer broader-based taxes for transportation. There's been a lot of studies done on the amount of traffic on the interstates versus the, the local roads, and people prefer to use the interstates. So, it's, uh, we, we need to get people on the major arteries. It's better for our communities, and we should look at the most cost-effective way to do it, and I happen to agree with you. I think when you make the tolls as much as they are, it becomes a factor on using that road.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
Well, number one, I want to just tell a quick story about the last time the Congress was deadlocked on the debt limit, on summer of 2011. And when the deal was reached, Senator, you convened in early August, a lot of people were out and on vacation, but you convened an excellent conference call with state and local elected officials, and it was the first time I ever remember, you know, I'd, it had been nine years for me on the county council at that point, and I never remembered any member of Congress so close to the event providing so much accessibility and such a clear and lucid explanation, you know, from your vantage point on the Finance Committee as you've done here. You laid these things out so clearly. You're obviously extraordinarily well-informed about immensely complex matters, and this conference call I just found so helpful that I could then, you know, people don't always distinguish, I'm a county council member, people ask me all the time about the fiscal cliff. I mean, they, they think we're, I'm in the government, so I must know. And so, when you do that for us, you provide us with the tools to look like we know what we're talking about because I just talked to Ben Carton about it. So, that was just a, that was a really great outreach effort, and you continue with your outreach efforts. I'm, I'm so impressed with your accessibility and how familiar we are with you. You're here so often. I got two quick, well, one quick and one not so quick. With respect to immigration, Chris Van Hollen was here last week. I raised this. Of course, we all hope there will be immigration reform. He laid out some markers. There's an aspect of it, it affects my family, it affects a lot of your constituents, and that has to do with visitors visas. And I'll give you an anecdote, but it paints a larger picture. So, you've met my wife. She's from Brazil. She has brothers and sisters, very successful professionals. Brazil is a wealthy country now. It's not like it was 20, 30, 40 years ago when visitor and tourist visa rules were established, but her brothers and sisters, who quite recently would have liked to have attended the funeral of their mother, my mother-in-law, they can't get a tourist visa. It's just too difficult. It's too restricted. And there's, I guess, a fear that people will skip and become illegal. In the case of my brothers and sisters-in-law, I mean, they're professionals. They, one is an attorney and one's an engineer, and they own their own businesses. They're not gonna skip. They just wanna come to the United States and spend money and be tourists and help our economy. So, it's something to think about, is how difficult and restrictive it is for relatives and, and tourists from other countries, countries that used to be thought of as Third World, but, you know, now Brazil is providing financing for, for us. So, it's just, it's, it's, it's an issue. That's the quick thing. The less quick thing is, and you touched on it, on transportation. First of all, let me just say, I don't object to tolls. I mean, these things have to be paid for one way or the other. So, whether you pay for it gasoline tax, whether you pay for it on a per-use basis, how the things are structured is important. Equity is important. Progressivity is important, but, but I don't object to tolls as a way of paying for transportation. And if, and, and if you have a situation as we have in the Maryland General Assembly where a coalition of disadvantaged communities like Baltimore and rural communities that won't see the benefit of transit projects stymie our ability to get a gas tax, then maybe we should do tolling. We've gotta do something because our transportation needs are so urgent here in Montgomery County, but the rest of the state doesn't feel it. They don't sense that traffic is as big of a problem. On Wednesday, Councilmember Berliner and I, with help from Councilmember Reamer and others, Delia Feldman and others, were organizing a summit in Annapolis to emphasize the urgency of replenishing the Transportation Trust Fund because when Councilmember Reamer and I met with Peter Roboff, Federal Transit Administrator, in the spring, he indicated, he was more optimistic than you about the competitiveness of the Purple Line. He indicated that the money's there as long as President Obama won the election, which, you know, we're delighted he did. But there's gotta be a state match, and right now, there's no state match. So, so my interpretation of where things stand with the Purple Line, although you've laid out the competitive difficulties at the federal level, the state either steps up to the plate or time runs out, the clock runs out, we're not gonna get a Purple Line, or a Corridors City trains away, or a Baltimore Red Line. So, that's the focus of this meeting on Wednesday in Annapolis, obviously a state issue. So, you talked about, a little bit, about carbon tax. You talked a little bit about structuring revenue from our energy use. So, could you talk a little more about that? I mean, who are the leaders on that, just in the Senate? And, and do you have thoughts on that? And so, I mean, last observation here, I, you know, great supporter of our president, kinda disappointed in the failure, I mean, Romney obviously was the man from oil and gas. He ran his whole campaign, he would never touch oil, he would never touch gas. It was as if, and he sneered, actually, at President Obama at the Republican Convention for saying that it was time to halt the rise of the oceans and to save our planet. But President Obama was worried about a few precincts in Ohio, I guess, that were coal precincts, and really didn't come out, certainly doesn't have a mandate now on climate change, on carbon tax, on any of these things, and yet, the weather is crazy. Things are getting worse, and I just wonder, what is your analysis of what's happening in Congress now? Who do you see as the leaders on the issue? Do you have proposals of your own? The big topic, carbon tax, climate change, energy use, you touched on it, but if you could just elaborate, what, is there any hope on these issues?
Right. Well, first, thanks on the briefing, on the importance of the briefing. Some are predicting that we should complete the fiscal cliff by around December 24th. I will not convene a conference call on the 25th. But Ken, if you will remind me, we'll, we'll get George on the phone on the 25th.
I'll get a Chinese response.
On immigration, I just wanted you to know, on immigration, you're absolutely right. I give you, to me, the, the best, clearest example is, is what we do to Chinese tourists. There are Chinese who want to spend a ton of money, a lot of money. Now, this is what they have to do. In many cases, they have to travel halfway across their country to visit one of our consulate offices because they're not in their community. That's not, and then, there's no guarantees because they don't schedule these appointments as timely as you would think. So, they may have to spend a day or two away from their home in order to apply for a visa, which costs a lot of money, and there's no guarantee they're gonna get it. And it takes a long time before they act on the visa applications, and a lot of people don't plan six months in advance. So, how do you buy your tickets, which you may or may not be able to come to the United States? So, you don't come to the United States, and you spend your money someplace else. It just makes no sense whatsoever on these, particularly these tourist visas. So, that makes no sense. Secondly, we, I, I, I'll tell you this. If we would have a rational visa policy for visitors, I could reduce my budget as your senator because I probably have one full-time person working on this in my office. This is not an easy task. We get more requests for people who have funerals or weddings, trying to get family members here, and, and you're right, they're professionals, there, there's no real risk factor, but, you know, you're dealing with a very bureaucratic system, an inconsistent system, because it's not the same in one office as it is in another office in the same country. So, it is a, really, a challenge, and it's costing us a lot of money. So, you're absolutely, we, we have a caucus that works on tourist visas and ees up on the visa issues, and we, we agree with you. And we would hope that with comprehensive immigration reform, we would make significant progress on, on that issue. On, on the energy side, there's a group of us, close to 20 senators, who meet every week on climate change. We think it is an imperative issue for the United States to show stronger leadership. We are making some progress. I, I know that we're all disappointed that the Kyoto process has been totally stalled, and we don't have U.S. leadership by passage of a comprehensive climate change bill, a cap and trade bill, something similar to that. But we have been moving forward on an energy policy that makes more sense, and the most recent numbers show that the United States, again, has reduced its carbon footprint. So, we are making some progress on this, but we're not showing the visible leadership that we need to, to get the emerging countries, the, the Chinas and the Indias of the world, to do a much more aggressive job on, on climate change issues. So, we need to do a better job. We are hopeful that we can get a carbon tax somewhere along the process. We don't think we can pass a bill that's called cap and trade, but maybe we can work on it in a different way. I thought cap and trade made a lot of sense. The reason is, we're using basically a Republican idea of energizing the private sector marketplace to make money, same time solve a problem. That's America. That's what the free market does. If you can use less carbon, you make more money. And there's a cap, so we are guaranteed certain environmental results. And we have a revenue flow, so we can deal with transit and other issues that give us an infrastructure that's friendly or towards our environment. That's what cap and trade's all about. We're not gonna be able to get a cap and trade bill enacted in, in the next Congress with, that's, to me, pretty clear. So, we'll try to do it in, in parts rather than one comprehensive bill. So, we're gonna have a renewable energy portfolio bill. We're gonna have a tax bill. We're gonna have a, a tax incentive bill, trying to get a level playing field. Right now, oil and gas are the only ones that have permanent tax breaks. The renewable fields have temporary provisions. Some of them don't work. So, we're gonna try to do a better job on the tax code, on incentives, and we're gonna try to also deal with, as I said, some reward for reducing carbon footprint such as a carbon tax. And I think we can make progress on those fronts. We need to.
Well, I'll echo those comments about praising how in touch you are with what's going on here in Montgomery County. It's just really remarkable how many events I'll see you at and discussions that we can have, and your efforts to just keep a finger on the pulse. Really appreciate it. Wanted to ask about the rent cap. You said something I hadn't heard before, that is it, is it possible, if you could just summarize the issue again, is it possible it's an administrative procedure at this point, and, and OMB can just take an action, there's no legislation required? And that has been a big issue for us. We've had to give up tens of millions of dollars in local property taxes in order to keep facilities here because of that, that cap, and it would be nice not to have to do that. If you could touch on that. And then, generally, if you could talk a little bit more about revenues, the figure you cited really caught my attention. We're about 15% of GDP right now in terms of our revenues. Historically, we're close to 20%. I'm sure that the, whatever deal is reached in the fiscal cliff isn't gonna dramatically change that. So, how do you think that might change over time?
Well, the Simpson Bowles got us back to around 20%.
Did they?
Yeah.
That's with the exempt, the deductions that they?
Well, they had, they had a way of getting there. You're right. But the bottom line is, the revenue number that they asked for was, and you're right, they, what they did was take a, significant reductions of deductions and exemptions and credits to get us there, but that, that was rough. They didn't, it didn't, we didn't know if it would add up to all the revenue that they said, but the revenue number that was in original Simpson Bowles, and there's a lot of ways you can, it gets a little bit into the weeds here as to what you assume, whether you assume, see, if you assume current law.
Right.
The revenues are gonna be pretty dramatic.
Right.
Because, because, right, right now, the revenues would easily exceed 20% under current law. No alternative minimum tax? Another 20 million people paying an alternative minimum tax? Now, a lot of us won't be in Washington much longer after that goes into effect, but it does bring in a lot of revenue. Going back to the, all of the pre-Bush tax rates, $1 million for a state, going back up to the 20% on capital gains, dividends at ordinary tax rates, back to what we call PIP and P's, which means we're phasing out the exemptions and deductions for high-income levels. That all, that's current law come January 1st. It's not reasonable, and of course, elimination of, of the, of the payroll tax and a couple other things. But that's not reasonable to assume the Congress will continue those policies, will allow those policies to expire. So, what Simpson Bowles said is, we're gonna assume that these policies, these longstanding policies are what the baseline should be. And therefore, if you don't do that, you raise some revenue. That's how we get revenue, by not extending the tax rates to the higher income. And that, you, you need to extend a certain amount of that to get back to around the 20% level. You can't get up to the 20% level strictly through rates. You can get about 70% there, 65, 70. So, what we're saying, in addition to that, let's also get some tax reform that produces some revenue. And we think the combination, eliminate some loopholes. We think the combination of the two can get us back to our historic levels. Then, of course, if you get normal growth, don't want to use dynamic scorekeeping, but if you can get some normal growth of our economy and some normal employment numbers, then you can maintain those numbers. And that's the strategy that we're trying to use on the tax side.
Very good. And the rent cap, the?
The rent cap makes no sense. I mean, I don't know why it was ever imposed. We're the only region in the country that has it.
And ours is higher than Northern Virginia, or lower than Northern Virginia.
Yeah. Well, the, the, Montgomery County's higher than Prince George's County, but it, having a high is probably, could be good. Having a low is bad.
That's what I was saying.
Because what you're saying is, if a developer's gonna take a piece of land and develop it, how much rent can they charge? And quite frankly, yes, land costs are higher in Montgomery County than they are in Prince George's County. That's true. But these caps don't really reflect the realities of the marketplace. And of course, they were put in at, at times when we were using rents as an alternative, it, it was, it was when we had no other alternative. Now, because of the budgets, we're using it as the preferred route to do, do the lease-backs. That's the preferred way to get government facilities built. So, it puts a, it means you have to use creative financing, which sometimes puts more burden on the local government than should be on the local government. But other times, it means you're doing it in a less efficient way. It's actually gonna cost the government more money because of the rent caps. So, we've had some pretty strong conversations with GSA on it. They're the ones who have to enforce it. GSA has now agreed with us. They said these rent caps should go, and they've recommended the elimination of the rent caps. It's in OMB, budget people. They haven't said no. They haven't said yes. They've been looking at it now for about a year. So, we're trying to get them to say, get rid of it altogether. In the meantime, on specific projects, we think we can be successful in getting the rent cap not to apply. So, if we have a significant project, let's take the FBI. Let's assume there's competition, Montgomery, Prince George, Washington, Northern Virginia. We think we can get them, we hope we can get them to eliminate the rent cap on that project because it makes no sense if you have a real level competition here. But we should get rid of it.
So, OMB can just, it's a regulation.
Yeah, then get rid of it. It doesn't, it's no, there's not, it's not a congressional thing.
Okay. Councilmember Berliner.
Senator, I'm going to join my colleagues in thanking you for your, excuse me, extraordinary attention to Montgomery County. I certainly experienced it firsthand in the bracket work that you did to make sure that we got the federal dollars, which was really the first time that the federal government really stepped outside the four walls of one of its enterprises and recognized the effect it's having on the outside community in providing dollars to offset that impact. to offset that impact, it was really because of your work and Senator McCulkey's work and Congressman Van Hollen's work, but you have really paid a lot of attention to us, and we're very grateful, and Kenny's terrific, of course, as you've done.
Thanks, thanks.
I wanted to share with you, I'm having a meeting later this afternoon with the Secretary of Energy's advisor on what we're doing on utility 2.0, we call it here in Montgomery County, of trying to get to a place where our electricity infrastructure actually is a 21st-century infrastructure that works for everybody, and is far more reliable, gives more consumer choices, is greener, is more efficient. Tom Friedman wrote an article a couple weeks ago with respect to what's happened in Chattanooga, in which they use some federal stimulus dollars to do this kind of work, and as a result of that, they are attracting businesses, they are an attractive place to be. When I met with the Governor's Task Force on reliability, I shared with them that Germany had a bad year last year, they were out of power for nine minutes, and the people in the Governor's Task Force, their jaws dropped, they couldn't conceive of it, and I share this with you because it is, hopefully, there will come a day when the federal government once again is investing in America, and is investing in its infrastructure, and this is one of those ways we make such a big difference, as Chattanooga used its stimulus dollars in that way, and we're just trying to say, and here in Montgomery County or in Pepco Service Territory, you're now talking about spending a billion dollars on this system, and my fear is that we are gonna spend a billion dollars to put Humpty Dumpty back together again, instead of making that great leap forward, where we'll really have a utility of the future that can help drive innovation and drive job growth, so I just wanted to make you aware of that, and to the extent to which you can be helpful, there are some dollars in DOE for projects like this, and be grateful for your support.
Well, thank you for bringing this up, until you've experienced this, you, you really don't understand what it's all about, so for six days, I had no power and a hundred-degree weather living in my house, and I tell you, it was, it was really a challenge, and really, it's beyond inconvenience, it's a, it's a, shouldn't be in our community, and I was not unusual to go six days, it was not healthy. You're right, we don't want to just do cosmetic changes that won't deal with the underlying problems, there's some things we can do to harden our system, there's things we can do to improve our system, but we also have to have better information to the, to the consumers, it's not acceptable to give them a, from a computer point of view, from a technology point of view, we should be able to determine pretty quickly the extent of, of outages and the time necessary to get outages back online, there's gotta be a better rationale for how they go about doing it, so I, I think that can be communicated a lot better, and people know they can take action, the problem we had is, should we go into a hotel or not, of course, the first couple nights you couldn't find hotels, but should you go into a hotel, we don't know when the power's coming back, do we need it for one night, two nights, three nights, there's gotta be a better way of informing people, and I said you've got to harden the system better, there's no easy answer to that, because it'd be extremely expensive to put all lines underground, that may not even be the answer in some communities, so, but there should be policies here, and I, the state has taken on principal responsibility here on oversight through the, through the regulatory process, but I do think there is a federal role, part of it, of course, is a better energy infrastructure, which we could use, we need that, so it is something that we have to fix. Well, Brad, let me just tell you, I just, I am proud of what we got done, it was amazingly difficult to get the Department of Defense to take any responsibility for anything off installation, they are just totally focused on their facility and not the community, and that's nationwide, so this was not our first effort to get them resources to deal with transportation needs outside of the fence line, in fact, we've had programs to do that, and we've had funding, and they have not used it, and refused to use it, so this bill, as you know, passed, and they found a technicality not to provide the money, we had to pass it twice, and we finally got the money, and I do thank you for acknowledging the role I played, but, but as I put it out earlier, Congressman Van Hollen did a real heavy lift in the House of Representatives on this issue, and Senator McCulkey was extremely helpful to get this done.
Well, Senator, thank you very much for taking the time to come and chat with us, as you can see, everybody has a lot on their minds, and we definitely will continue to work with you every step of the way, and anything that you need from us as well, we are here for you, and just really appreciate your leadership.
As I said to you before, we sat down, if there are specific needs you all have or projects, just let us know, Ken will get me the information, or pick up the phone, give me a call, be glad to try to deal with a specific issue, on the county, the priorities, it's wonderful when you are united, even when you're not united, let us know, and we'll try to do the best that we can. We know that there's a lot of different views, but obviously, the big issues on economic development, we want to make sure that we are united the best that we can to get the resources necessary to keep this county moving in the right direction, so it's a real honor to represent you, George wants to know why I'm here so frequently, as long as you don't make me pay your, your local taxes, I was coming here as much as...
I'm not notes!
You were good right up to that last one.
Thank you, Senator, thank you so much.
Nice to see you.